We're good.
Sorry.
With DMC auditing and consulting. And Tim, you are up for this one.
Yes. Sorry, I want to say stop. Anyway, we had put out an RFP to do our 2023 audit. So it is a one-year, it's a one-year RFP. The firm that responded has experience with Colorado counties. Actually, he used to work in Adams County in their finance office. And specializes in cleanups, if you will. We would like to move away from our current auditors and start with a new one. So this is, this is just a one-year, one-year term, if you will, to do the 2023 audit in concert with that Bailey work. And then from there, if we can evaluate, we will do another RFP mid-year for a longer-term auditor contract. But this is just to switch auditors for our 2023 audit.
And we have the PSA teed up to send to them with the approved proceeding with this. So I would just recommend approval with final legal review, if you will.
Any questions?
No.
I don't have any. So I will look for a motion to approve pending legal review, the PSA with DMC auditing and consulting LLC.
Still moved? Second?
Okay.
Nothing for me?
So call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the PSA with DMC auditing and consulting is approved pending legal review. Great. Agenda item number two, an MOU amendment number one between Colorado Department of Early Childhood and Lake County Department of Human Services. Chris, you're listed as leading this.
Yes, so you previously approved this, but then we discovered that we didn't have the correct documents. And so the amendment needed to be issued in order to align the documents with which I'll actually approve the services for. It's just kind of a technical amendment.
Okay, so nothing, no substance to change? Okay, great.
I'll move to approve the MOU amendment one between Colorado Department of Early Childhood and Lake County Department of Human Services.
I'll second.
Okay.
No further discussion for me.
None for me?
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. So that amendment number one is approved. Thank you for catching that.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Setting records for efficiency here. Okay, third and final agenda item. Excuse me. Discussion and consideration of the Planning Commission recommendation on the adoption of short-term rental regulations within the Lake County Development Code. Public hearing was held on February 26th. And you have the floor.
Thank you. I do have a recommendation in the form of a statement of motion from the Planning Commission to read into the record. And it's February 26, 2024. The joint public hearing, during the joint public hearing, the Lake County Planning Commission, Lake County Planning Commission unanimously approved with five members in favor, the following motion. The motion was made by Joey Edwards and seconded by David Clark Barrow. They recommend approval of file number 2402, a code amendment to sections 5.2.18, 5.2.18.1A through L, and Chapter nine definitions to the Board of County Commissioners with the following conditions, and that a resolution be prepared to memorialize this decision. Number one, amend 5.2.18.1J15 to read, outside wood or charcoal fires are prohibited. It shall be the responsibility of the owner or property management company to ensure tenant compliance. Outside gas or propane grills or contained gas fire pits are allowed. And make the following findings, that A, that as conditioned, the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, policies, and other provisions of the Lake County Comprehensive Plan and this code. B, that as conditioned, the proposed amendment is necessary because of changing social values, new planning concepts, or other social or economic conditions. And C, that as conditioned, the proposal is within the best interests of the health, safety, and general welfare of the general public. And then just as certainly it calls for within our process, staff just wanted to provide a little more clarity around their deliberation on the decision and recommendation that they brought forward. So this reflects them suggesting kind of that option B or the manner in which the policy draft was written. So they are suggesting an increase of licenses to 170. One of the other concerns that they communicated was whether or not in the concerns around potential, how the public knows, how to engage, and with enforcement issues as well as property owners, short-term rental license holders on enforcement. We spent some time and deliberation talking about that. And there is guidance within the policy which they thought might be sufficient. But we're going to have a work session on March 11th. We may do this, several of the members of the Planning Commission have to be gone during that time. So we may kind of, staff is going to prepare how our compliance works. We currently have already onboarded with Cloud Permit, our enforcement side of our software. And so immediately, there is a method by which the public can make complaints. We just recently actually had one. Staff, it was an administrative review. Staff was able to mitigate the concern between the property owner and the adjacent property owner so that it hasn't grown into a greater issue that we're aware of, at least today. But there is already a platform that can take any kind of complaints. And we're already administratively kind of doing that initial attempt to mitigate whatever those concerns are. And then the policy calls for next actions. If we would have to bring a license in that had violated any of the conditions or the standards associated with use within the code, or any kind of conduct or complaint that hadn't been able to be resolved administratively. So they said perhaps that will be enough, but we're going to just kind of follow up and potentially make some recommendations, or at least bring a finding forward eventually to the board of how enforcement and compliance is either believed to be sufficient or a recommendation on how maybe we could improve it. So that was something that was outstanding of the recommendation and some future, kind of just making sure that enforcement and is, and compliance is very supported and that the public has good opportunity to understand it and participate if needed. So that really kind of includes anything that was included in their deliberation. The one thing I'll mention is that we do have Rachel from EPS with us this morning until about 9:30. She has another commitment. So if you have any clarifying questions for either EPS or staff, I just wanted to highlight that maybe we can do those while we still have Rachel with us. If they'd be directed at any of, any support that EPS provided through this process.
Great, thanks.
You bet. And then the resolution has been provided. Thank you, Chris, for quickly going through that. And you were, and thank you, Liz, for doing a clean version of it this morning for you. So you do have the resolution as well. And it has been through legal review and reflects what the Planning Commission would recommend.
Okay. An apologies, Commissioner Marcela had to step out for a call to school. So. Sarah, do you want to lead off?
Sure.
You itching or?
Yeah, I have, I have a few things that would be nice. Maybe since Rachel's still here. And I'll go through two or three of them real quick. And then we can tackle as you see fit, man. So I was curious, I think, thinking about like neighborhood saturation. I know it kind of got brought up, but I don't, it doesn't sound like the Planning Commission discussed it at a greater length. So I wonder about adding some language or maybe just the board's thought about the neighborhood saturation. And I wonder if there is a worry in increasing the cap to that much without some language that says like, we might want to monitor this. And if any neighborhood saturation comes in, then, you know, will we be notifying neighbors and letting them give feedback or share concerns that might impact whether or not an application might get approved or denied? So that neighborhood character and saturation is one. The minimum days is another. I think at one of our work sessions before the joint hearing, it was suggested by a Planning Commission member to increase those. And so I'm curious as to why we fell back to the 14 days as a minimum. And I don't quite understand or have a strong opinion, but I understand that like 15 days triggers that sales tax. And so maybe just a little conversation around, around that determination. And then I think the other one that might not be pertinent or Rachel's input might not be totally necessary is that question that got brought up at the joint hearing about a transfer of the deed. And I wonder if maybe adding like something like an arm's length sale that might, might be something we think about. But perhaps the first two are.
Yeah, I think we can speak to all three of those. I mean, can I start from the bottom up? So within the slides, we, there was a comment about sale or transfer of title. The policy doesn't have transfer of titles. So it only reflects a sale. So it would, that was discussed with the Planning Commission. And they felt that it was sufficient because while the slide that I presented did talk about transfer of title, the policy itself is a sale, so it would mean a bona fide sale. So if it's a transfer because of appropriate situation or.
Like a family member gets it for cheap price, but they do pay for it, but it's not considered an arm's length sale, right?
So it would be, you know, it would be not just a transfer of title. So if it's, if it's a sale, a bona fide sale that warrants, but not just a transfer of title. So like a quick claim deed that's between related parties would not trigger, but a bona fide sale is not transferable. So we did talk about that a little bit.
Okay.
The next is we did provide the board with a report from EPS on the, on the 14, 21-day discussion. The information that was brought forward was a little erroneous during the work session, that there was a thought that that doesn't trigger sales tax, and it does. So we vetted that with legal and with EPS and provided a position statement on it in your documents about the fact that they do have to be charging sales and lodging tax. It was that that increase after 14 days, if you're only running 14 days, you don't have to claim it through an income tax return.
Yes, I think that's what, okay. It did mean that, I'm sorry. And I didn't understand, like, is that something we are concerned about? Or helps with that argument that, you know?
And the other, the other reason that we looked at it when we talked to Aaron Smith, our legal counsel, Land use, was that the average days a year that short terminals are occupied are 50 days on an average. So we didn't, so the thought 14, and she really advised us, and I think Rachel, she had that direct conversation with Aaron as well, that we wanted to be careful about not making that, that number to, making it a reasonable number. So we did take the feedback from the work session. EPS met with legal counsel on it and we provided kind of a best practice. But if you'd like Rachel to expand on that, she could. And then the other I would say is you're absolutely right. And something, you know, just like when we adopted backcountry zoning, this is something you will see it being brought forward to you coming up. A little foreshadowing in an AIP that we intend to monitor this code and see what the impacts of it are. We, I would suggest there's two methods for properties or maybe subdivisions or community members that are concerned about the potentials of saturation within their neighborhoods. One is of course the complaint portal to start providing us with feedback. And the other is that we would be happy to provide homeowner associations with information on how to maybe strengthen and work on their own covenants and homeowners, if there is something that they feel specific to their neighborhood that they want to strengthen outside of the county regulations. And so we would try to, A, we can absolutely, you'll see it coming forth in an AIP that we're going to be working on the administration and monitoring of the new regulations so that we can report back to the board. We can see how things are going. We can see if the cap was increased to that 170, that we can be monitoring what that increase looks like and be reporting back. So we do see the need for making sure that we closely monitor the impacts from if the cap was increased in the short term, even if it's not. We want to make sure that we are monitoring the policies, that make sure we've landed on a good policy and that we don't need to adjust it. So keeping in mind, and that was another portion of kind of the Planning Commission's consideration is that this may be a starting point. The code may need to be adjusted a bit. But keeping, and being very cognizant of kind of the pending litigation that's out there. There's not a lot of resolution on what is, is kind of happening yet around us. But again, wanting to maybe not be as regulatory specific to areas without some very definitive variables. So the one area, the community housing overlay, we're looking at density, price point, and then accessibility. So if we go on out from there, we really want to make sure that we have that justification. That's really kind of been a trigger of, you know, some litigation concerns. And so again, just kind of wanting to kind of see how that evolves as well as kind of just watching how if we start seeing an influx and saturation in areas that we are unable to kind of mitigate those impacts that we're being very cognizant of that. So that'll be coming forward in an AIP as well.
Sorry, I hadn't thought about that. Can I just ask a clarifying question? So HOAs and like special districts, they do have the legal authority to put in their own like further limits? Either number? Okay, oh, interesting, okay.
Yeah. And that's, I was just going to dovetail in some of what, and you know, this has been a hot bit of litigation this past year. And I think it'd be good to let some of that play out to see how the Colorado courts are interpreting some of these before we start doing additional regulation. You can always come back and amend this, you know, in the future if you start seeing the impacts that you're concerned about. So I just think I agree with Ann that best practice right now is to try to set up systems to collect the information that if you do want to come back and amend it to further regulate specific neighborhoods, you have the data to justify doing that.
Okay. Is that, is the litigation around the justification of any regulation for affordable housing efforts? And specifically? Or is it just, because I, I don't think I am like suggesting this for affordable housing efforts necessarily, but for like neighborhood character. Don't necessarily like know how to better articulate that or pull those apart. But how is it?
Some is kind of attached to affordable housing initiatives and, and challenges to that. But there's also a lot of discord regarding just the impact on.
Communities.
Free use, well, but also the free use of private property type of thing. So what you have is trying to preserve communities and saying, we've got too much density and therefore we're not going to allow it, especially by folks who are specifically, or just invested in properties to use these things as to challenge those. And I'll just say that most of those folks typically have the resources to do so. And so it'd be better to let, let some of that play out and see again how the courts are interpreting these. So, because it very well could also inform how we need to come back and revisit this code anyway.
Okay, I do, I mean, I just, I want to honor, I want to honor a lot of the public comments that we got. Not, we only got one really that kind of in the joint hearing, but a lot of them that came in were from folks who are in those neighborhoods. And they aren't, you know, I mean, I think, I don't, I'm not, I'm not saying that, that the methodology is wrong. I'm just saying that it's more than just being able to buy your way into a community. These communities exist already. And I want to make sure that we, I mean, I'm pleased that it's on the record that we are intending to closely monitor these. And I wondered if in that limitations or somewhere in here, maybe it's not necessary. There is some language that, you know, it's like we, we have the intention to monitor this and/or if, you know, anyone neighborhood might, the volume of licenses might hit and go beyond like the overall average, that will be a trigger to have the conversation. But it, it sounds like we, that is the intention. And we.
Absolutely.
To do that. And I, and I wouldn't necessarily suggest at this point any one neighborhood in particular. I don't know that we, I mean, that's like 20 different formulas because they're all so different.
And I think also, you know, encouraging, you know, happy to meet with any different subdivisions and looking at, you know, they, there are methods by which they can consider what they would like to do within their subdivision. So there is an opportunity there. And the other thing I would suggest, you know, we are doing online compliance and we got, we arrived. You know, the first portion of this work was really identifying anything that was being advertised online that was unlicensed and recognizing, you know. So I feel like we're going to continue to have a very good database and data collection. You know, we've got our mapping right now. We'll continue to be able to monitor where the saturation levels are. So absolutely. And you'll see that in the discussion in the AIP that's coming from our office, which is an action initiative.
Priority.
Priority, thank you. And, and so definitely recognizing that it is, we need to continue to make sure that we are watching the administration of this as it, as it plays out. And hoping, you know, that online ability for anyone to reach out and say, I believe in my community, I have an unlicensed STR. Or is this license, you know, the licenses are published on the website. So you can go, the public calls for it in the code. You can check, the public can always check and make sure that a neighbor has a properly licensed STR. And if they don't, they can certainly, we've had some really great groups, neighborhood concerns that have brought us lists before of, we think these are operating and we've investigated those. Neither, I don't, in the past licensing process was a bit, was easier. And so generally, we could get them under permit and make sure that we were monitoring them. And we, you know, we had that data collection piece. Moving forward, our, the regulations are, have more requirements and more standards appropriately suggested. So, you know, our compliance, when we, after that first initial period of the moratorium work, we got to about 97, 98%, 99. CC knows better. But I know that we were in the very high 90 percentile of, of compliance with only a few that were not compliant. And we've been able to identify on marketing sites anything that was unlicensed. So we'll continue, so the compliance piece, monitoring complaints, having an online ability for people to come in and, and provide us with complaints and concerns. We're also extending or asking to extend an offer to a new code enforcement position within the office to add capacity. So both planning staff will be monitoring this. And then we'll also have code enforcement potentially added in our code outreach, as we like to refer to it, added to our capacity this year, so.
Well, just, sorry, just while Rachel's still online.
Yes.
I wanted to dig in. I'd love to get some more input on that overall cap number. I mean, to me, that just still seems a little high. Like, I mean, it's a 30 to 40% increase. And I think there's already a buffer even with the current level. So I don't know if you or Steph or Rachel have.
Sure, Rachel, if you want to jump in. I know you're going to have to leave and we haven't been able to hear from you. So I'd love to turn it over to you if you want to just, you know, based on natural kind of increases, I don't anticipate, you know, we, we think we have about like that 15 licenses that might initially, and some of those met that, didn't meet the grace period. And so that, you know, keeping in mind that we were at 127, we're currently at 118, you know, you know, we naturally decrease. I don't think we're going to see, what we're projecting is we would not see that incredible increase right away. But go ahead, Rachel, I'm so sorry to.
No, that's okay. And apologies, I cannot get my camera to work. But essentially, a cap determination is a policy decision. There's no scientific way to do it. So we looked at current conditions, potential future conditions, and then Ann and her team took a lot of feedback. And it's allowing room for growth, but not unlimited growth. And so, you know, the place that the county's at right now is. Things haven't gotten too bad yet. And so we're able to kind of still put our arms around it and say, okay, how much do we want this to grow? And the previous conversation, that's a current determination for right now. The cap can also change as these policies. But allowing, you know, current license holders to keep their licenses, potentially people that didn't meet the grace period to reacquire their licenses. Some people who don't meet regulations. But allow some room for growth without it being on better growth. But at the same time, restricting growth in that community housing. And that was the balance that we landed on was growth in some areas, but no more growth in the community housing overlays. And so that's what, is this balanced approach? Where it is percentage-wise, it is a large number. It's not saying that we'll get 170 licenses. So some communities have a lot in fact, to set their caps below their current numbers and get down to the cap through attrition. We're looking to naturally throw towards the cap. You know, the city of Hora had their license to that 120. I think the most they've ever had was 115. So it's not saying we'll absolutely get 170 licenses. It's just saying that that's the maximum that we want to have at this point in time. I don't know if that fully answered the question. Happy to expand on that.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate your opening comment that it, I mean, it's really a policy decision, not, like, there's no like analytically right answer.
Right.
So, fair. And I'll just say, and I, especially given that we've already been talking about the potential for amending, I mean, we're going to be monitoring this, we're going to be amending it, you know, particularly monitoring with an eye to neighborhood saturation or other impact issues. I mean, I, I'm leaning much more towards less headroom for growth. And that can be modified if, you know, as mentioned in the staff report, we may be losing some commercial lodging. I mean, we can see how things go, but to just, to have like a 30 to 40% increase right off the bat, this seems like, that, I mean, that's a lot, especially since it's excluded from that inner core that is capped. Sorry, I forgot the name of what we call.
Primary.
Community, how, the one that overlay.
Community, the community overlay could not go beyond 15.
I mean, just without a number, I'm, I mean, some growth seems appropriate. Like 140? I don't know.
Yeah, I was thinking 130, 140.
Yeah.
10% ish.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
And then as we mount, yeah, I agree with you.
10%.
I mean, it's a lot harder, we know it's a lot harder to revert and put back than to increase, so.
I think so too. It's harder to pull it back than if we.
Yeah. Yeah.
Have a number that we have slid over to.
Yeah.
Just have in general.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
One, I'm hearing 130, 140, 135? And I mean, again, it's a policy decision. We don't know the right answer, right? Like.
Right.
What, where, where's a point of comfort? I, I mean, I, I feel like I could live with one thirty?
Yeah.
I could live with one thirty-five?
I, I mean, I could live with one thirty, I think that's reasonable and, and the, I, I feel like some of, you know, some of the justification along with going to one seventy, oh, well, we might never get there, we could never get there, we'll never, we won't see an influx. Like, I think that's kind of a reason to say
Yeah.
To make the argument on the other end of, well, let's do it then, a smaller argument, so.
So Steph would just ask, if, if we're at one eighteen and we know that we might have fifteen, that, and some of those, realizing some of those were ones that missed the grace period, one thirty-five, you know, when you were talking about that, that would, you know, that would kind of manage what we kind of anticipate on the horizon. And, and that is still only eight licenses more than the moratorium in place. So it's not much growth at all.
I would feel the same way.
I mean, it's, it's not a ten percent growth, it's, you know, so one, one to one to seven is, is not a ten percent growth from there. So I would just suggest, if you're wanting to think that it's harder to pull it back, I think that we, knowing that we've got those, because we're gonna, I think immediately if they are, if we go to one thirty, we're gonna be in that position and we're waitlisting and we're, you know, so.
And remind me, how many we anticipate becoming the primary licenses that don't? Okay, so twelve, twelve off of the one eighteen currently, fifteen that might be waitlisting to be standard licenses.
So that one thirty-five would provide you with just a tiny bit of buffer.
Right, I mean, it's not even a ten percent growth from where we were at the moratorium, so yes, I mean, I
Between the primary falling off and the ones participating coming in?
Yes.
That, it gets back to the, um, one eighteen-ish, really, okay.
Again, I'm, I mean, per, you know, personally, I'm fine with that or even one forty, I, I don't think, or at least for me, I don't think the intent is to immediately have like a waitlist and trying to get back to somewhere. I think, you know, looking at the data from other counties and jurisdictions, you know, we're le- le- less impacted than other counties. So again, I, I don't think we're, like, for me anyway, we're not trying to like drive it back to some point. So I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with a one thirty-five or one forty to give a little bit of headroom. And, and some grace to those folks who, you know,
Missed that grace period.
Missed that grace period, et cetera, you know, so, I mean, does the seepage pit decision play into this too? Like, we might, I mean, some people might be
Oh, that was a question that I had.
Okay.
I mean, there's, not, not to revisit the seepage pit discussion on the merits, but just, just what we think the impact on the numbers might be.
So I think we have twenty-three properties that we know are on seepage pits.
That are short-term rentals.
That are short-term rentals.
Who might not be able to continue.
You know, but they'll
Three years to do that, right?
But they do, they have until, you know, they would be operating in twenty-twenty-six. So we've given time to allow them to do some investigation into what are their options. So they can make some informed decisions moving forward. But yes, we, we do have some, some time in there, we currently have twenty-three that we believe have seepage pits based on historic data and records.
And, and there were some unknowns, right?
Yeah, there's like seventeen that we just don't have any, any information on, and so
Is that just because they've never been inspected or?
Yeah, I, I, right, I mean, the, there's just not an as-built in, in the address file.
Right.
So we just didn't have anything internally historically on, on those.
Okay, but that's a good point, sorry, I'd forgotten about that long, lengthy grace period, so that's probably not gonna have an immediate impact on headroom.
Yeah, not, it wouldn't be immediate, because we do, but it'll be a great check-in to kind of say, okay, as we're looking at our twenty-twenty-six licenses, how have seepage pits been able to adjust? Properties with seepage pits have been able to adjust to the, the new regulation and what's the outcome of that then?
Um, yeah, I'm fine with one thirty-five.
Yeah.
I'm too.
Okay. Are there any other parts of the recommendation? Sorry, Sarah, is it back? I think, I think we addressed the fourteen versus twenty-one days.
Yep.
We addressed the transfer, entitlement or sale, I think we addressed the saturation, like sort of monitoring that.
Yeah, that, those are all the, some big ones, there's a, a few other things I just wanted to kind of go through for pub- public, like just further public awareness, if I might.
Yeah, yeah, please.
The, Ann, on the, on the exhibit A, the first part of it, D, so short-term rentals, the standards and provisions, provisions apply to all short-term rentals in any PUD district in which the short-term rental is allowed use by right or conditional use consistent with regulations and limitations for short-term rentals specified in the PUD zoning control document. So any PUD that allows this as a use by right still is subject to the caps and all the, I just, I just wanted to make sure that was clear that the PUD doesn't over, override that.
Right, if someone came in with a PUD control deck through their PUD process that would say, just we would revert back to this and say, we're not, you know, we won't negotiate that out of the code.
Okay, and then the fees, am I remembering correctly that it used to be a hundred? And did we increase it to one twenty-five?
It was ninety.
Fee increase?
It was ninety-five.
Okay.
And then the cost recovery just, so the cost recovery associated with the license fee is just the administrative of processing the application. But based on our, our very done analysis, it was
Increasing thirty percent?
Yeah.
Okay, and you feel good with that number?
Well, it, there is the ability to consider, you know, it, so the recovery cost, yes. Of processing the application, of course, there's room for discussion on any other funding mechanisms that associated with short-term rentals, like a regulatory fee that I talked about in the EPS kind of analysis. And, you know, we could go into considering, looking at that if the board would like to, or a recommendation from the planning commission on that. So there's either taxation or regulatory fee that could be put in place that would potentially bring in a funding mechanism that could be allocated towards our housing, community housing goals.
Okay. And then, um, one more quick, just the, um, trying to find, actually, two. ADUs are not eligible for standard licensing, but primary of a property they would be available or eligible for that. That out, and then, and just cause I don't, I mean, I don't know why it wasn't singing, the chapter nine definitions. The short-term rental primary license, the rental of a dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit to a single party of related or unrelated persons known to one another for periods of time not to exceed twenty-nine consecutive days. Do we, I mean, this might be splitting hairs, but do we want, do we want to say not or, um, not exceed up to twenty-nine consecutive days? Cause after that, it's considered a long-term rental?
Um, you, that's the intent of, of the definition. But is to
I just don't want anyone to read that and like be like, oh, I can't rent my ADU out for more than twenty-nine days. If otherwise, wanting to.
Definition of a short-term rental, of a short-term rental.
Under a definition of short-term at all.
Okay.
And maybe
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand, I don't want that to be, is there, I don't want it to be misconstrued to dissuade long-term rental.
But that's listed in the land use code, right?
This is a definition, you know, in chapter nine, so if someone wants to go and say, how do you define a so I don't think you'd be looking here to try to figure out, right here, you would be like, well, what defines a, a short-term rental? A definition of a short-term rental is twenty-nine days, so I think it's fair to assume that a long-term rental, if you were, you know, you were trying to establish, I think this establishes what I think you're, you're wanting to establish.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand it, I just, just wanted to
Yeah, I, cause I think when you attach this to the land development code, so A, then you refer back to the code for the definition.
Right, so this, all of this will be
So this wouldn't be slanted alone.
No, it'll all be put into the exact sections
Yeah.
That are, so this would just be a chapter nine definitions. So the thought would be that you would be looking to try to define what is a short-term
Yeah.
Primary short-term rental and not really looking to define what's a long-term there. It would be, you know, be seeking the definition of the specific use.
Okay. Um, I think that is all I have, thank you.
Sure, no, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't have any other proposed changes, so I could, or do we need to read more into the record? Or can I just look for a motion to approve the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
With the following changes.
Yes, yes, I, I, um, I will take a stab at that.
What resolution number?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I look for a motion to approve resolution twenty-four oh-seven with, I think, one amendment, which is in exhibit A, section five, two eighteen, one, section I, one, changing the cap from one seventy to one thirty-five.
Summer.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion or questions, comments?
I don't, I don't think I have anything else, just thank you for the work that you put into this and for the, you know, using those consultants to help us ensure that we get the best information and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm just sorry, I rattled that off kind of fast, did you get the section?
So, so I got to exhibit A, section five.
Uh, it's five, two, or five dot, two, dot, eighteen, dot, one, section I, capital I, subsection one, and the cap is changing from one seventy to one thirty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so the resolution twenty-four oh-seven is approved with that one amendment.
Um, that's the, yeah, I'm sorry, it should, that should have been, the, it's, it's been, we're bringing it all through there, I'm sorry. In terms of referring to adoption of the resolution by its title. To amend the motion to reflect the title.
Amend the motion to reflect, um, including the title. So resolution twenty-four dash zero seven, a resolution amending the Lake County Land Development Code to address short-term rental use in Lake County.
I'll second the amendments.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
We'll get that amended and give it to Liz.
Yeah, send it to me and I'll take my rest.
Okay, great, you'll get it, you'll get it changed, thank you so much.
Okay, and that, I think we are adjourned, that concludes the three agenda items.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you do this one for me, please?
And, sorry, I was, I don't know if you're rushing up the meeting, but maybe